We now are ready for the Bloomington Police Department budget. And Ms. Lacy, how much time do we have allotted for this one?
Twenty minutes.
All right, very good. Chief DeKoff, welcome. Please go ahead.
Let me figure out how to share my screen here. Hold on just a minute. Okay. Good evening, Council. My name is Mike DeKoff. I'm the police chief for the city of Bloomington. I want to thank you for the opportunity to present my budget tonight. I want to thank you for past support. And I want to take a moment to thank the men and women who serve the city of Bloomington as police officers and as our civilian non-sworn personnel to support the police officers in their day-to-day activities. The mission of the Bloomington Police Department is to safeguard property, safeguard life and property while respecting diversity, encouraging civility, solving problems, and maintaining a high standard of individual integrity and professionalism. The Bloomington Police Department includes 105 sworn officers and 68 non-sworn employees. Our major 2022 initiatives include restoring the funded number of sworn officers to 105, adding three new dispatchers, adding four new community service specialists, adding a director of law enforcement support services, housing incentives, and recruiting and retention incentives. The department has authorized for 105 sworn officers. We currently have 93. Seventy-six of those are available due to officers either being on military leave, on light duty, off injured, and also those in training. The patrol division consists of 78 sworn officer with 55 currently available. The detective division has 17 sworn officers with 16 available. The administration division has five with all five available, and our civilian non-sworn employees are 68 with 57 available. Our 2020 major accomplishments. We implemented the community service specialist. We've increased the number of police social workers. We have introduced ICAT training, which stands for Integrated Communications Assessment and Tactics, which is provided by the Police Executive Research Forum. It is an evidence-based de-escalation training where it emphasizes de-escalation techniques and less lethal force options. We have started an individual issue take-home vehicle program. We have done housing incentives. One of those is the rental assistance program, which is in that program. We have completed a new state-of-the-art physical fitness facility to improve officer wellness, and we've added embedded athletic trainer at the department as well. Some 2021 budget goal updates. Under increasing the community sense of safety. Again, our goal is to reduce Part I crimes, including burglaries, robberies, and thefts by 3% in 2021 compared to 2020. We are committed to reducing the number of gun crimes committed through using evidence-based and data-driven practices for proactive patrol and investigative strategies. We continue to use the Stride Center as an alternative to incarceration. And as I mentioned, we also continue to emphasize de-escalation and less lethal force options based upon the training that ICAT teaches. And we continue to always try to broaden our efforts to hire and train a diverse workforce. Under crime analysis data to set goals for crime reduction. We review monthly crime data so that we can determine the location and frequency of those, so we can base our patrol strategies on that. We continue to maintain 16 data sets provided to the Police Data Initiative, which is a national police data website that provides a variety of different data sets that are published on a national website. We also publish that data on the city's Be Clear portal. We completed this year in February our annual public safety report. Under accreditation, the update is we have conducted this year's independent review where Kalia assessors reviewed approximately 54 of our standards. And we also completed the required departmental report that was due by May 31st. Under central emergency dispatch. Our goal is to continue to answer 911 calls in less than five seconds. I'll note the national standard is 20. And we're continuing to evaluate the process, hopefully by the end of quarter, the third quarter, to look at having the dispatch center seek national accreditation. And we also are implementing the final recommendations of an outside review by adding three dispatchers as part of the phased-in program to add nine overall over several years. Records Division, they continue to comply with the mandates by NIBR, which is the National Information-Based Reporting System. We switched to that within the last couple of years from the Uniform Crime Report, which is it is the system that the Federal Bureau of Investigation uses where police agencies report all of their crime data. Under Administration, Financial, and Maintenance. We continue to use the Guardian Tracking Software, which tracks performance, and it is used as an early warning system. And we continue to do the capital replacement schedule that we have, which replaces vehicles and a lot of the equipment such as radios, body armor, and body cameras that the officers use. My 2022 budget goals, again, they're very similar to the 2021. We want to continue to work on reducing Part I crimes. We want to continue to reduce gun crimes. We will continue to use the Stride Center as an alternative to arrest. We hope to do a lot more community outreach. We did not do any last year because of COVID. And so our numbers were basically nothing, and we're starting to do more outreach to connect with the citizens of Bloomington. Oops, the goal of adding the five additional officers back into the budget is for 2022. And we want to hire four additional community service specialists to assist us when we respond to quality of life issues. Under crime analysis data to set goals for crime reduction. Again, the big ones there are we will continue to monitor the data so that we can address that with our patrol schedules. We want to increase the community sense of safety by 3% as measured by the city's community survey. We want to continue to maintain the 16 data sets to the Police Data Initiative to be clear portal. And we will continue to have our yearly public safety report in February. Accreditation, again, this is set by Kalia, where they review approximately a third of all the standards every year. We will continue to do that process in 2022 as well. Central Emergency Dispatch. We will continue to work hard to answer those calls in a less than the national standard. And we continue to seek, we will continue to seek accreditation for that for the dispatch center as well. Records Division is the same. They will comply with all the NIBR standards to make sure that we are meeting the requirements from the federal government. And they will also work to ensure accurate and timely data is entered in the report process. Administration, Financial, and Maintenance, the 2022 budget goals are pretty much the same. Some new to that is hire and train a support services director to oversee the non-sworn staff for continuity of operations across the different operations that we have and the capital replacement needs of the department, which is mostly funded by Public Safety Lit. Kind of an overview of the general fund budget for police. The personnel request is 16,650,000. It's an increase of 1,354,000 from 2021. Category 22 or category two of supplies, $565,000 request. This is a decrease of about $48,000 from 2021. Category three, other services and charges. The request is 1,518,000. This is a decrease of about 233,000 from 2021. And category four is capital outlays. 1.4, 1,437,000 requested, and it's an increase of about 569,000 over 2021. This slide shows the differences from 19, 20, 21, and 22. And you can see the far right, the increases from 2022 to 2021. Overall, the budget request for 2022 is 20,172,123. It is a 9% increase over the 2021 budget. ARPA funds, there is $250,000 in personnel services early on. In my presentation, I mentioned hiring and retention incentives. That's what this amount of money is used for. And other services, the 125,000 is category three expenses that are in the ARPA funds. This concludes my presentation. Again, the budget request reflects increases that align with the stated goals of promoting civility, protecting diversity, and safeguarding life and property. I thank you for your consideration of our 2022 budget requests. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Chief DeKoff. And let's move to council questions. And we'll start with Councilmember Rallo.
Thank you, Chief DeKoff. This question might be better directed at Jeff Underwood. I wondered, since we budgeted and authorized for 100 officers, but currently only have 93, and we're budgeting for 105, or authorizing 105 in the coming fiscal year. I doubt that we're going to probably get many more than where we are now, seeing that I think I understand three officers are leaving soon. What happens to the budgeted amounts? Do they return to the general fund?
Yes, if there are any funds left over, as you might remember, we always come to you in the fall with kind of a cleanup app board. And sometimes the police department needs more money, other times they give some back, so it'll be dependent on where they end up projecting out the year for whether there'll be any return funds or not, whether they'll need it in other categories.
I see. So the budgeted amount that Chief DeKoff just illustrated is probably a gross overestimate of the expenses. I mean, in terms of the new request.
Well, I would say, you know, we budget for all the positions that are in there. Obviously, we've refunded the five positions, and then the five new ones that he talked about. In addition, there's the three new dispatchers, so there's a significant increase in that budget just for new salaries in addition to increases in the civilian and union positions as well.
Okay, I guess I've got a little over a minute remaining. Chief DeKoff, could you talk about, could you distinguish between sworn officers and community service specialists?
So the community service specialists are non-sworn employees. They do not go to the law enforcement academy, and they are not police officers. They are non-sworn people that we utilize to answer non-emergency calls, minor, they might take minor reports, minor theft reports, and they work minor property damage accidents for us. And then the sworn police officers have a lot more training, go to the Indiana Law Enforcement Academy, have certifications, and they can respond to all calls that we get.
It sounds like the community, the law enforcement support services, or I'm sorry, the the community service specialists are quite limited in the extent of their training and duties.
They certainly cannot respond to everything, but they can respond to minor things, that minor calls that we get.
Minor calls, thank you.
Councilmember Bowlin.
Just a follow-up question. Does that mean they can respond to noise complaints?
Um, we have not had them do that in the past. That is something that they're fairly new, and we really haven't had that many noise complaints with COVID. And so we haven't really determined if that is something that would happen. Those types of calls can sometimes turn where it might not be in the best interest to have non-sworn people show up. And there are a lot of times where there might be some kind of criminal activity that's happening that they couldn't address, but a police officer could.
I mean, the issue I have with that answer is that I have heard it very frequently from constituents in my district that the police are not interested in answering noise calls when they're as frequent as people in my district tend to call them in. And so if the community support specialists could be sent to ask a party to quiet down to be the first response, that would be a great interest to my constituents. What do you say to that?
Well, currently, they don't work the hours that the bulk of the noise complaints come in. Usually, the community service specialists complete their day by eight or nine o'clock in the evening. So that would be something we would have to look at and schedule them in the later hours or the early morning hours, which we currently don't do. Because we currently only have four.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for Chief DeKoff? Yes, Councilmember Sandberg.
Thank you, Chief DeKoff. The Integrated Social Work Program and the new community specialist, it's relatively new. And my understanding is, again, COVID was kind of a factor in finding actual things for the community specialists to do. It was kind of intended that they would do a lot of the community outreach. Obviously, you've already stated they do minor things, obviously, that they certainly could not do if they're not certified to to deal with some of the things that your badge officers do. Could you talk a little bit about where we are with this relatively new program and how comfortable you feel with how much they are able to assist the sworn officers?
Sure, that program, actually, we changed the name of it this year. It started as our Neighborhood Resource Specialist. And we hired two people. Um, I believe it was two years ago to start that. And it took us a little bit of time to get that program up and running. And then those two people, one of them became an officer, and one of them is no longer with the department. And so we had to start over from scratch, and then that's, we changed it to community service specialist because we park, we had parking enforcement, and parking enforcement went back to Public Works. And so some of the duties that parking enforcement officers did for us, we didn't have anybody to do that. And so we made the decision that the community service specials would pick up some of that workload that parking had taken on to help free up officer time. And so that's kind of where we were at. The problem was all last year, they didn't do a whole lot because of COVID. And so it was really slow to get it going. This year, we added two more people in 2021. We got those people hired, and they've completed their training, and so they're just really this summer, just starting to kind of do more for us. But again, it's been one of those things that it was a slow-starting program for a variety of different reasons, kind of not really in our control. And so we're still kind of seeing how we can use them efficiently and effectively to respond to calls and things. And so obviously, my biggest concern is that we not put them at any risk of them getting hurt or getting someone else hurt. So we are constantly, supervisors constantly monitor the calls that they are sent on. If it's a call that a supervisor deems is not appropriate for them to go on, they will pull them off that call and have an officer respond. And so I'm not going to put someone in a situation where they might put themselves at risk or someone else that are trying to help at risk because it's not the appropriate response mechanism.
Thank you.
Councilmember Scavellary.
Following up on that, why wouldn't it be the appropriate response mechanism? Is that the presence of a weapon? Is that, what would make it?
Well, there could be a variety of reasons. You know, usually minor property damage accidents, it's been our experience that those don't really turn into anything or escalate. Taking a minor report, like maybe a minor vandalism or a minor theft where there's no suspect, those tend to not, you know, develop into anything more seriously. You know, I'm a little concerned about noise calls because there have been times where noise calls have escalated where, you know, officers have responded, and there have been shots fired, there have been fights that have broken out. They discover criminal activity. So we have to evaluate those to see if that would be appropriate for them to respond to. Clearly, we're not going to have them respond to any kind of serious call because they don't have the training that a police officer has. And so they are limited in what they do, but we also do have a lot of minor stuff that we do. And so they do, they can free up officer's time not to take those minor types of things. And that's, you know, we're always looking for alternative ways to respond to things. We have online reporting that's available that frees up an officer, the community service specialists free up officers. So there's a variety of different things that we do that can free up an officer's time. And this is just another one, but we have to be cautious how we use them because I certainly don't want to put them in a situation where they get hurt or someone else gets hurt because of their response.
That's helpful. Thank you. And I'm pleased to hear that we have the two new social workers on board and our new athletic trainer. I met them all, actually, at the Switchyard Park event. And they're great. So I'm glad to see that moving forward. At the same time, I am struck by the fact that we are approved for 105 officers and we have 76 available. And could you help, for those of us who don't do the scheduling and don't put together coverage plans? What does that mean for just coverage in the city and on our shifts?
So each shift is staffed at the beginning of the year with officers. And those staffing levels are, those staffing levels are determined by a variety of things. The number of calls for service on that particular shift, the types of calls, there's a lot of things that go into to that decision to staff a ship. Obviously, over time, you know, over the course of the year, those numbers fluctuate. We are in a situation now where we have, we have seven openings. So that's seven people we don't have. We have eight.
Did you? If I'm to interrupt you for a second, my time is up, but I'll come back to this question another time. So I've gone overtime too many times.
So do I not finish answering it then? Is that the wrong?
I will. I will go ahead and just repeat that same question.
Okay. And so we currently have, I believe it's eight or nine officers who are in training. So those are new hires that are either at the Indiana Law Enforcement Academy or they are in the field training program. So we cannot count them as staffing on a shift because they're not fully trained to be out on their own. We have two or three officers, I believe, on military leave. And so we can't, we can't replace them because of the regulations the military has. And so those are just open spots that we don't, we can't fill. We have our DRO program has openings. I currently only have one DRO because three of them have left, and two of them are on extended medical leave. So and I believe that, I think I hit all the categories of where people are at. So that impacts the staffing levels. And so what we have to end up doing to maintain those staffing levels is we have to backfill with overtime. And so when a shift comes about, and if the minimum staffing is around, is eight officers, and we don't have eight officers available to work, then we ask officers to hold over for overtime to fill those vacancies.
Thank you very much. Other questions for Chief DeKoff? Are there any first round questions? Councilmember Flaherty?
Sure. Thank you, Chief, for the presentation. And as for the fire, thanks to all our sworn officers and non-sworn personnel for their service. I think one of the common themes of the budget cycle so far this year has been concern over policing and public safety. And I think in the context of police in particular, maybe two things, one related to compensation, and second related to staffing levels and support for the calls, the calls that we've received. And I think the first one, we'll probably get into in various ways, and I've asked some questions. The second point, though, I think it's fair to say there are some different opinions on the council and in the community about how to address that kind of staffing concern. And I think there's sort of one side that's just add more sworn officers until it's not an issue. And then there's another side, which is sort of where I sit, which is what can we take off of the officer's plates? There's a lot of progressive communities, you know, looking at things like mobile crisis response units and things like that to try to reduce the load on our officers on situations that they may not need to be, or may not even be best suited to frankly handling. Not because of lack of training or anything else, but because the difficult nature of and history of policing in this country. Not everyone always feels comfortable or safe interacting in that situation, especially in mental health crisis, et cetera. So with that preface, I wanted to ask what your thoughts were about crisis mobile intervention services. It didn't sound to me like the community care program described by Chief Moore quite fit into that box, though you could say it's related. Is this something that's being discussed as an option to try to reduce the stress and impact on officers? Or what are your thoughts?
Sure, that's a good question. And I think we've kind of been doing that all along. When we created the Downtown Resource Officer Program, that was a program that started to try to reduce the number of calls for service that we were getting on people who had might be experiencing homelessness or who had some kind of mental health issue that they were dealing with. And so we started that, and we partnered with a lot of social service agencies. That's how we created the social worker program. Which, again, that is a very important program that we have because they go out and they end up picking up some of these, the people that we get these calls on, they follow up with. And so having them do that work reduces the number of incidences that we're getting calls on people also. So we created those programs to do just that. You know, we were, we were one of the main supporters and proponents of the Stride Center being started because, again, that's, that's, that's a partnership we have. Centerstone runs that. And it's people that we get calls on that don't need to go to jail, but we didn't really have any other option. And so Stride takes that off our plate. And so if you look at any of the Stride numbers, a lot of those are repeat people that on their own now go to Stride when they have an issue and they're in crisis. So we're not even, we're not even dealing with them and having the police take them. They are going on their own because they've made those contacts. And so
That's, I'm sorry, Chief DeKoff.
I don't see, I don't see the timer on my screen. That's why I keep talking because I don't, I don't see it.
Okay, I'll let you know.
Thank you. Cut me off.
Thank you. Can we have the tones back on, bottom chair?
Councilmember Smith, I think you had a question.
I did. Thank you, Chief DeKoff, for the presentation and for everything you and your staff do. So reading the organizational assessment from 2020 talks about proactive policing. It's really important. Can you say a little bit about why proactive policing is really, is, is an advantage? And how much time the BPD spends in proactive policing? And is it reflected anywhere in the budget? So it's like a three-part question.
So it is, I don't believe it's reflected in the budget. It would be included in some of the crime reduction strategies that we're doing. Proactive policing is important because that's, that's our opportunity to, and there's a, there's a lot of different definitions of proactive policing. I'm going to focus on more of the community policing aspect of that. It's important for us to be able to do that because that's where It's important for us to be able to do that because that's where we interact with the public, not necessarily in a call for service way, but we don't have a lot of time to do that because our resources are really tight and the officers go from call to call to call. And so, and you know, the past year, we haven't really had an opportunity to do that because of COVID. And so it is important though, because that's where we build those relationships with, with the different community members and and where we build trust. And not having that opportunity to do that is, I think, not a good thing for us to do because we need to be able to have those connections with the community in non-police ways. So that, that they, they get to know officers. You know, so it's, it's difficult and quite frankly, the officers miss that interaction because, you know, they, they, they meet people and they, they become friends with, with different people in their districts. And so again, it's just, it's that personal contact that is, is, I think critically important in trust building relationships. And so the problem right now, though, is we don't have a lot of time to do that. And so we're trying to figure out different ways that we can do that with outreach efforts using the community service specialist. We did, we did a thing in Crestmont a couple of weeks ago where we had several of our community service people up there helping out. We had officers show up, but it, people, people enjoy meeting and talking to the officers. And so that, that's, that's really an important part of that. And, and you know, we're just, we're busy and short-staffed and we just don't have a lot of opportunities to do that right now.
Well, thank you very much. I have met different officers out on the street. They're, they're always good guys, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any other first round questions? If not, I will ask one. Chief DeCof, I wanted to ask you about the data analysis and gathering that your department does. Does the BPD analyze data on racial disparities in arrests and other police interactions? And if so, what do you do with that data?
Are, are you asking, do we look at that information for internal purposes?
Right.
Yes, that, that information is collected and we do, we do look at that. However, what we have found is that it's not, the, the racial data that we collect is not always accurate because, for instance, the Indiana driver's license does not have race on it. And so sometimes it's, 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 it's hard to tell. It may be hard to tell what someone's race is. And so, but we do look at that and we, we look at how those interactions, you know, in what context they are in and how, how we do that. And and that is information that we report out on Be Clear and on to the National Police Data Initiative.
So is that, have you noticed any trends as far as are there racial disparities? And if so, do you have plans to address them?
So what we have seen is Bloomington's African American population is roughly four to five percent. We have seen some of our arrest data and some of our stop data that shows that number being higher. However, we also know that Bloomington is a, is a destination community. And so one of the things that we've looked at, and I've mentioned this before, one of the data sets that we really, we, we don't self-initiate and it is, it is completely, people call in for it, is traffic accident data. And so what we've seen is that, that, looking at that data and looking at the, the, the race, the racial makeup of who's reporting traffic accidents is, it's roughly the same percentage as our arrest data and stop data. And so I think that's something that, you know, we're not experts in looking at this and analyzing it. But I think that's something to look at because if you, if you follow statistics, you would think that, you know, Bloomington's population is four percent, that's what the accident data should show too, and it doesn't show that.
All right, I'll follow up with you on that later.
Okay.
Thank you. Final call for first round questions. No? Okay. Yes, Councilmember Sims, there we go.
Thank you. Head on mute. And Chief, we have, we have had a lot of discussions and I think you have with a lot of the community members. And community outreach and community policing has always been a high priority of mine. And I think it's important that the community understands over the years, some of the initiatives such as the work we did or that the department has done on racial profiling and to improve that aspect and part of the training. And I don't have a lot of time, so I'll throw a lot of stuff at you. I'm also a concern that with our lack of officers, then that manifests itself into lack of training time that we normally have had in the past and utilizing officers so much in overtime status that we risk getting tired and overworked officers in the goal of public safety. So I know that was a lot. I'm sorry and I hope you can address it. And maybe we can talk further in the next round, but you have about a minute.
I'll try to hit all those. So, so we have, we have cut back on our training. However, we still prioritize de-escalation training and communication skills because those are things that we do all the time. And so, but we have had to cut back on training because we, we just don't have the resources to do what we used to do. Trying to think what else you asked.
Well, there was a lot there and I know that we have, there's just a lot that happens in, in the police department and training and how we try to do to become a better department that's just not public knowledge.
I will, I will.
And I won't, and I won't get into a whole lot of details because I can't. But for example, when we let officers move on for such things as excessive force that are not what's acceptable in this community. Those sorts of things, I just think need to be highlighted more.
And actually, speaking of that in particular, Indiana passed police reform laws this year. And and one of the things that they passed, and I was actually one of the, the members of the Indiana Chiefs Association that worked with the legislature to craft this was they, they made it, they changed the law on reporting police personnel files if they moved to a different agency. They passed statutes that allow the Indiana Law Enforcement Academy to decertify officers who, who have been accused of excessive force. And they have a whole process now that, that they review those types of complaints so that they can decertify the officers who should not be police officers. So there was a lot of important stuff in that, in that legislation that passed this year that I think will make Indiana law enforcement a much better place.
Sorry, Chief. Thank you. Your time is up. I don't want to get in trouble. Thank you.
All right, now we're ready for round two questions. Councilmember Rallo.
Thank you, Chief DeCof. So you hit on something that I wanted to follow up on, and that is that this minimum staffing requirement and need now for mandatory overtime, which to me is distressing because what it says is that it must be exhausting to actually work a shift and then to work shifts back to back. Says to me that there is a problem inherent there. What, and yet we're supposed to be hiring community service specialists, which I assume, what percentage of calls can a community service specialist take? In other words, and what, what would a community service specialist expect to do relative to a sworn officer, say, in equivalence? Are they, they're not equal, they're, it's, it's a percentage, but it's, I don't know what percentage of the calls this person could do.
Yeah, well, first of all, there, there is a request in this budget for hiring and retention incentives. So we're, we're trying to come up with different ideas to entice people to want to come work for us and to keep employees. The housing incentive is one and the take home cars is another. And so, but getting to the, what you're talking about, I don't, I don't, I haven't figured out the percentage of calls. I'll look at that and if you put that in writing, I'll figure that out and respond to that question.
How about the Director of Law Enforcement Support Services? This is another position that we're asked to add instead of sworn officers. Well, what I mean is the, the types of, what we're doing is, you know, budgeting, we're authorizing for more sworn officers, but we're not getting there because the incentives aren't in place. So it's sort of an empty number at this point, but yet we're going to hire a Director of Law Enforcement Support Services. I don't know what that is. Could you tell us about the duties of this individual?
So we're, we're working on, on the, the job description for that. But, but the concept behind that is because I have 68 non sworn employees spread across the organization, they all kind of do different things and they all have, they all have supervisors over those units. But what we sometimes lose is that continuity of, of operations across the organization because dispatch may be doing something and records may be doing something. And, and I have an administrative captain over all of those units, but.
Okay, okay. You, that, that suffices. I'm running out of time. Does that person report to you?
They would, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sandberg.
Thank you. I want to get right to the core of my main concerns about this budget and that has to do with recruiting and retention. And in order to get there, I do want to spend a little time talking about the minimum staffing for the shifts because we've received information that projects how many times we have been under in June, July, August with projections for September, October, November, because you know who you're going to have on your roster that far ahead. But day shift minimum is staffing seven, afternoon shift minimum staffing nine, night shift minimum eight, Sunday through Thursday, and then nine on Friday and Saturday. My understanding, though, is the shifts of the, the staffing level minimums have shrunk since 2020. On a scale from one to 10, how concerned are you about how sustainable this is? And how are we ever going to get to a point of being able to recruit the best possible officers we can get and retain the experienced, well-trained ones that we currently have? If this continues the way it's going?
Well, it is concerning and we have shrunk that number. And the reason we shrunk that number is because we were very concerned about burnout of our officers. And so, but we still have to maintain adequate staffing levels to make sure that we can respond to whatever calls we had. You know, as I mentioned, we're, we're, we're trying different incentives to, to hire people and to keep the, the people that we have. There, the, the rental assistance program, we haven't had anybody take advantage of the house, the down payment assistance yet, but the rental assistance. We have six officers taking advantage of that. Take home cars, that, that pilot project has about 25 cars assigned to officers living in the city and those on call in our critical units that we need a fast response in the county. The 250,000 that is requested in the budget, we haven't determined how we would use that yet, but it obviously will be used to retain and offer incentives to, to possible new hires as well. So, but it is, it is concerning though, because we have to maintain officers that we can respond to emergency situations. The minor stuff, if we don't have enough people to, we'll just have to wait. But it is, I am concerned about burnout and about ma- making sure that we can maintain those staffing levels.
Yeah, we are running out of time, but I definitely want to drill down on why we are losing good, well-trained, experienced officers, where they're going. I've been told, but I kind of want it on the record here because I think we've got a serious problem here later on. Thank you.
All right, other questions for Chief DeCof? Councilmember Scamblerie.
Yes, we are in round two, correct?
Yes.
I'll continue that question. What are the biggest factors impacting retention here?
Well, you know, hiring, retention is, it's, it's not just our problem, it's a national problem. You know, different departments and cities have handled it different ways. I think you can, you could probably do a Google search and see where cities are, are increasing salaries. They're offering other incentives. You know, that's, that's something that we're looking at doing. We haven't made any decisions yet, but you know, we've, we've lost people to other departments for higher paying jobs, other opportunities at other departments. We've had people retire, we've had people get out of law enforcement. And so there's a variety of reasons why people leave. You know, clearly, we, we are in the same boat as a lot of other departments around the country trying to hire and retain people. And so, but we, we continue to look at it and we're trying to, to take steps to keep the employees. It's frustrating because we, we are a really well-trained department and we put a lot of training into new hires. And so if they're only here for a couple of years and then they move on, that's problematic because we have a lot of, we have a lot of money and time wrapped up in, in new hires. And so obviously, we need to look at our situation locally and make decisions where we're not losing those people. And so, but again, I think that's something that, you know, obviously the mayor's concerned about, I'm concerned about that. And obviously the council's concerned about that. So I think that's something where we probably all need to put our heads together to figure out what we can do to, to slow that, that, that trend.
And I'm inclined to agree because whether you think Bloomington needs 50 officers or 500, retention is, turnover is expensive and that's part of our job to think about that. Somebody may need to pick up this question after me, but we heard from the mayor last night that it's hard to compare apples to apples. And yes, our salaries may be lower, but we also do cars, so maybe we have different compensation packages and so forth. And what I struggle with is we are a Calea accredited force, we take excellence pretty seriously here. I would like to think, who should we be comparing ourselves to? Who is taking our officers? Do we compare ourselves to Seymour? Probably not, with due respect for our friends in Seymour, but who should we be comparing ourselves to?
I, I, I think it would be fair to look at other Calea certified agencies. I mean, those are agencies who take, who take professionalism seriously. And I think that those, those would be agencies to look at. I think, you know, we are a Big Ten city, so we could look at other Big Ten cities to see what they're doing. I mean, there's, the mayor's exactly right.
I'm over.
Sorry, Chief, that's, that's your time. Thank you. Other second round questions for Chief DeCof? Councilmember Bowlin.
Chief, to follow up on Councilmember Scamblerie's question, can you point us to a list of Calea certified cities? Can you think of a couple off the top of your head that are sort of examples without being the only examples? Are there college towns like ours that are Calea certified that you look to?
You know, I'm drawing a blank. I, I used to know who some of them were.
Are there any in the state of Indiana?
Yeah, there's, there's roughly, I think, probably 20 agencies in Indiana that are Calea certified.
Name a couple?
I'm drawing a blank, sorry. I can't remember.
I mean, South Bend, Lafayette, Terre Haute.
Lafayette, I don't think Lafayette is, West Lafayette might be. Oh, man. I'm drawing a blank off the top of my head, sorry.
All right, say what, while you, other questions are being asked.
A question in writing and I can find that.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Smith? You're muted.
Pardon me, Mr. Bowlin just asked my question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Carmel, I know Carmel is because I, I wouldn't compare us to Carmel, but I know they are, they are accredited and I believe Indianapolis is accredited also. Those are two that come off the top of my head.
If I could follow up, Madam Chair?
I don't recall whether you had time remaining, did you?
I only used about a minute.
All right, go ahead.
Just briefly, Chief, I mean, I think you see the, the challenge here. We're looking for cities that we can compare ourselves to as directly as possible. That means they.
That means they really ought to be about our size, probably have a university in it and be Kalia certified. So like the more of those we can get, the better. We, especially ones in Indiana. But, uh, you know, like I think this is pretty important compared, we need some kind of measurement in order to determine like how we're doing, you know, independent of what anybody else might say. So, thank you.
Councilmember Smith?
I have the Kalia accredited agencies, West Lafayette, Terre Haute, Columbus, Shelbyville, Evansville, Valparaiso, Noblesville, Carmel, Indianapolis PD, Munster.
Thank you. Councilmember Simmons?
Thank you. Chief, I'll submit many of my thoughts and questions in written that you can respond to. But right now, and we're kind of talking about salary and retention and recruiting. And we all know that your compensation package, or not yours, but everyone's compensation package, a salary is a part of that and there's other items. And when we say compare apple to apples and oranges to oranges, that seems to be where the sticky part gets. Because the, the salaries are published. The benefits in some cases may or may not be and more harder to compare. Do you think that's one of our challenges? In dealing with other departments or our own even, from the, from the standpoint of recruiting and retention?
Well, I, I, I think what we need to do is we, we need to evaluate how competitive are we with other agencies? You know, the, the job of a police officer has, has taken a hit over the last two years. So it, it's hard to recruit people in general. And so those departments that are having more success, I think are making it a more, making the workplace more attractive. And so, and again, that's, that's trying to make, make them more competitive. And so with, with the fewer number of people getting into law enforcement, they actually have the opportunity to look around and see, see what departments are offering. So obviously the more competitive we can be, the more success we're going to have. And, you know, we, we have done a lot of different things, you know, we, we started, we were the first agency in Indiana to have embedded police social workers. And we've actually gotten people to apply because they like that concept. We've, we have outreach worker, community service specialist. So, you know, we're, we're, we're trying to look at how we police and, and a, a more balanced approach. But in the, again, we have to be competitive if we want to hire police officers. And, you know, we're, we, again, it's going to take a lot of people to look at that and evaluate how we can do that successfully.
How competitive are we, and this is probably just a guess, with other communities with regards to an item such as housing costs?
Well.
Cost of living here.
It, it's, it is expensive to live in Bloomington because of, of a variety of different reasons. And so we tend to have higher housing costs than other communities our size.
Okay, thank you. I'm out of time almost. Thank you very much.
All right, um, I have another question, Chief DeKoff. I'm wondering, how does dispatch decide whether to send a sworn officer or non-sworn personnel in response to a call?
So they, they have been given guidelines. And I mentioned this earlier, if, if a, if a non-sworn person is sent to a call, a supervisor can override that. Supervisors can actually override any call that a dispatcher sends an officer to. There are, there are times where we get calls that really we shouldn't be going to and the supervisors will, will disregard the officer and call the complainant back and say, you know, you need to do such and such different, you know, we're not coming because it's not a police issue. And so we've had to do that more frequently because of our, our, our staffing levels, because we haven't been able to respond to stuff. But dispatchers are given guidelines on what types of calls the community service people can go on and it is monitored by supervisors who can override that if they don't think it's, that's an appropriate call for them to go on.
Yeah, I, I know that the non-sworn personnel are still pretty new, but do you have any figures, even ballpark figures of what percentage of calls are assigned to non-sworn personnel?
Um, I can tell you as of, I think it was yesterday, I think they've taken fourteen-hundred-and-fifty calls out of about thirty thousand.
Thank you. Okay, let's start a third round of questions. Are there any further council member questions? Councilmember Sandberg?
Yes, can you talk about the role of IUPD in this community, guys? This kind of came up last night with respect to our staffing shortages and, and what we might or might not be able to do if we had a real serious shift where we needed a lot of attention. Can you talk about our relationship to IUPD?
Sure. So IU is, obviously it's located within the city boundaries. They have their own jurisdiction that they, that they're responsible for. I think at last, I think the last time I heard, they have around thirty-nine or forty officers for the, for the campus. But I will point out that they're short-staffed also. I mean, we, we, the last several summers hired part-time officers to help us do downtown patrol and, and patrols down around Wiley Street to relieve some of the, the complaints that we got about homeless individuals hanging out in those, in that neighborhood. We weren't able to do that this year because they wouldn't allow those officers to work because they needed them on campus. So they don't, they back us up in emergency situations. And if we, if we are in a situation where we have nobody available and we have an emergency call, we can reach out to them to see if they can take that call, but they don't particularly patrol in the city, they patrol on campus and they, they have their own jurisdictional responsibilities that they take.
What about our relationship with the Sheriff's Department in terms of what mutual aid or attending?
It's, it's the same situation. They have, I think roughly probably fifty deputies. I'm, I'm not, I'm not certain about that, but their, their patrol jurisdiction is the county, it's not the city. So they're going to be, they're going to be taking their own calls in the county. And again, if we have something where we need assistance, if they're available, they will help and vice versa. There are times where they need assistance and we back them up on, on serious calls.
Okay, thank you. Can you talk a little bit about the social workers? What, what specifically have they been tasked with?
So they, we, we have two new ones that are still, we're still kind of, it's in a growing process, trying to figure out kind of how they all fit in. Melissa Stone, our, our lead social worker has been with us for two years. She does a lot of case follow-up. There are a lot of calls that officers get where they reach out to Melissa and the, and the, the social worker team to have them take over the call because it, it really fits more in their, their bailiwick than it does the officer. So it's, it's actually a really nice partnership where if the officers get a call that is either going to require a lot of time with someone who might need services or need help, they bring the social workers in. The social workers aren't, very rarely are they sent on their own calls, but that has happened before where we just bypass the officer and send a social worker. But one of the big things they do is they do a lot of follow-up. And so.
That's your time. Maybe somebody else can follow through. Thanks.
Thank you, chief. Um, Councilmember Allo?
Yes, Chief DeKoff, could you clarify? So if there are, the, the non-sworn officers or, or the non-sworn people are taking fourteen-hundred calls compared to thirty thousand, that's about four and a half percent. Are some of those calls then the person just discovers that they need a sworn officer and then calls a sworn officer?
I don't know that information because I, I just got the total number. I haven't, I haven't looked at what types of calls they've gotten and I haven't looked at the dispositions. But that's, that is something that I can look at. If you put that in writing, I'll look at it.
Okay. And in terms of compensation, it, it appears to me that, you know, things like longevity pay, other departments also have those sorts of incentives. It's, we're not exclusive to that.
No.
It, it appears to be, yeah. And in terms of longevity pay, well, let, let's, let's take a step back. We, we were talking about what comparators, cities would be appropriate for Bloomington. We talked about Kalia certified and Councilmember Smith wrote, described a number of them. I note that many of them have wages about ten to fifteen thousand dollars more than our base salary for officers. Does that comport with what you, your understanding is of those cities?
Um, I, I am aware that there are cities that have a higher base pay. And I also know that there are, when you start looking at other benefits, a lot of other cities have longevity pay. A lot of other cities have like education pay incentives like for, you know, college degrees or higher degrees. You know, some agency, you know, I, I would guess some agencies might even reward military service. We, we don't have an incentive for that. We don't have, uh, you know, there are specialty pays if you have certain specialties within the department. I know other agencies do that as well. And so, again, I, I don't, I don't know exactly what every other agency, but I do know a lot of other agencies have similar things that we have for incentive and extra, extra pay.
Okay, so here's just a basic question, that's my understanding. Just, could you tell me if you agree with this? We are the seventh largest city in Indiana and we're ranked sixty-eighth in pay. Perf pay. Is, is that correct, your understanding?
I, I have, I have heard that, yes, I've heard that mentioned before.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions for Chief DeKoff? Councilmember Scamblerie.
Yes, thank you. I would like to circle back to add on to something Councilmember Sandberg talked about. And she asked for clarification between the roles of BPD and IUPD. Sometimes we've heard that there are multiple, multiple law enforcement agencies. And we have BPD and IUPD and we have the sheriff and we have the state police and we have the DNR and so forth. I don't know that I've ever personally encountered a sheriff though on Kirkwood or a DNR officer on the square or anything like that. Could you speak about those other agencies as well? Well, and what, what their policing role is, if any, in Bloomington?
Sure, all, all those, all agencies have their own jurisdictions, their own jurisdictional boundaries. The state police, obviously they're the state police, they can go anywhere, but they, their, their mission usually is to back up other agencies. But they, they don't have a huge, they, they won't have a huge presence in Bloomington because we have a city police. They, they work more in rural counties and do a lot of, a lot more highway and traffic type activity. The sheriff obviously, his jurisdiction is the, the area outside of the corporate boundaries of the city. They can do stuff inside the city, but that's not their main, that's not their main jurisdiction. The university is the same way, their jurisdiction is on campus. So they can do stuff in the city, but that's not their main responsibility. It's the campus. DNR is, their responsibility is Department of Natural Resources property, which is Lake Monroe, state parks and things like that. All of us back each other up in, in emergency situations. If, if there's something major going on and we need assistance, we will get assistance from all of those agencies and vice versa. If they have an emergency situation, we will back them up. We frequently back up the sheriff's department because they, they may have two or three people on duty at a time. And if it's an emergency situation, we, we will offer assistance. So it's, it's this, it's this mutual backing up on emergency stuff, but not on the day-to-day routine. They're not going to come and take calls for us unless we run out of officers and ask them to take a serious call. We won't ask them to go take a theft report because we'll just make that wait until we free up a unit to go take it. But if it's, if it's, you know, a domestic battery or, or an assault in progress, we would ask another agency to respond to that if we didn't have the resources to do that.
That's hopeful. Thank you. I have one more question, but I'll hold it because I might need some time, so.
All right. Any further questions for this round? Well, Councilmember Scamblerie, it looks like we're back to you.
And we're back to me. Chief DeKoff, thank you for your patience with all these questions. Council's been asked to consider multiple areas for annexation. And we will know more in a month or so about whether or not, how that might play out. But I was surprised, having attended multiple meetings on annexation, including some hosted by the county, our county commissioners, I was surprised at how often policing came up and concerns about how, how is BPD going to ramp up for this? Let's say half the proposed areas or two-thirds of the proposed areas actually do get approved for annexation, what will that require of BPD? And what are your thoughts on how, how you would ramp up for something like that?
Well, if, so if, if, if it was, if only part of them were annexed, there, there are formulas, I think, that we have produced that based upon each area of annexation about how many additional officers we would need. And so depending upon what areas were annexed, we would have to look at that and see, see kind of how that played out. And it's based on calls for service and, and population and, and the area, the area size. And so, again, that's, that is something that we are anticipating. I know that the mayor is anticipating adding officers based upon annexation. And so it's, we will just continue to, to look for the best possible officers and, and use the, 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 the incentive money that we have to try to, to recruit people to apply for our agency.
Thank you. There may be more on that, but I appreciate your answer. Thank you, chief.
Councilmember Sandberg?
I, I would like to continue on with the challenges of recruiting. How long does it take? And I understand we've had, what, twelve or thirteen openings recently? And we had twenty-nine apply for it, maybe twenty people are being interviewed. How long does it take to get a brand-new person, not, not a certified officer that we possibly have managed to recruit from some other jurisdiction? But what are the challenges with even getting new recruits up and operating to, for us to even have any hope of meeting our one-hundred-and-five?
It, it is a challenge. You know, the Indiana Law Enforcement Academy is where we have to send people that are not already certified. They shut down last year during COVID. They actually shut down earlier this summer because they had a COVID outbreak and sent people home. They do have the ability to go online and teach that, but there are certain things that they can't teach online. And so the academy is, is a big challenge for us because there's only so many classes every year and they only take so many students. So that is something that we will have to, to look at as we, as we hire more people because it will take longer. The, the academy class, if I remember correctly, is fourteen, fifteen weeks. So new officers have to go to that and graduate from that. Then they come back to the department and there's a sixteen-week field training officer program that they have to go through. And so that's a lot of training, you know, and that's after we hire them. So the, the process that, that you were referencing happened just two weeks ago, I believe it was. So that process takes a couple of months because we have to do interviews and background checks and medical checks and psychological checks. And so there's lots of steps in that process to make sure that we're getting quality people. And it takes time. Then we may have to, again, I go, go back to the academy. We may have to wait for an academy class to start because they only do it so many times a year. So you're, it, it can be a, you know, six, eight, nine-month process to get them hired and through all of the training before they are even on the street. Sometimes it can take, take longer than that even.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Bowlin?
Yeah. One thing I haven't asked, I'm not sure I've asked it before, but considering the bottleneck that the Law Enforcement Academy represents, is there no way, or is it not in the city's interest to start its own academy so that we can train people faster? Would it be worth it for us at this point? Would it be worth it for us at this point?
Well, we can't. There are state laws that govern all of that.
I mean, there's no other city that has its own academy or is a offshoot of it?
Well, one of the things that they did during COVID because of the backlog was they had established a one-time regional academy at a couple of different places around the state. And that, but that was because the, the academy was shut down and they had all these people that needed to, to go through training. And so they, they granted that one-time exception. But the Indiana Law Enforcement Academy is the only certifying academy in the state. There are offshoots of that. Evansville has, has a, a offshoot of that and there is one in Northwest Indiana.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Yeah.
Yes, but there, there are all, those are options, but there are also added expenses to that because we have to pay for the housing and everything else. And again, it's the timing of those academies and we haven't really found that the timing has worked when we've hired people. There's, there's still a waiting game.
I just mean, like, if Evansville and Northwest Indiana have branch academies, why can't there be a branch here? Can we, if we, if we, I mean, would it not be worth our time and money to fund such an academy?
Again, it would have to be something that the, the Law Enforcement Training Board would grant. I doubt very seriously they would do that since they already have one in Bloomington at IU.
Wow. Can we not use IU's academy?
They, the Indiana Law Enforcement Training Board has not given us that approval to, have not given them the approval to take municipal agencies. They, they've taken usually college agencies, universities.
Very interesting. Thank you.
All right. Any further questions for Chief DeKoff? Councilmember Rollo?
Yes, I'm picking up on new recruits. I understand in the last cycle, there wasn't a, a single accredited officer that was, that applied. And so it seems, looking back, say, five, the last five years, my understanding is that we have hired sixty-seven new officers and we have lost sixty-six. And so we've been essentially treading water, except to say that those trained officers that we've invested in, which I assume is a substantial investment, are now working for other agencies. This concerns me since this is a substantial investment of our community. And we're also losing that experience as well. So I guess my, my question is, is that can you confirm that that is the case, that we have lost officers to other municipalities that have really taken advantage of our good training?
We have. We, we have lost, we, we invest quite a bit in training, so we have, we have really well-trained officers. And we have lost officers to other agencies. And so it is, it is a pretty substantial investment in the training. And, you know, they may stay a year or two before they, they move to another department.
So in other words, we, we're making the new recruits very marketable to be hired by other jurisdictions. Well, I'll leave that as a comment. Okay? Thank you. Thank you, Chief DeKoff.
All right. Any other questions before we go to the public? Seeing none, we will now take a public comment on the budget proposal from the Bloomington Police Department. If you would like to make a comment, please use the raised hand function in Zoom. Or if you cannot locate that, you are welcome to put a message in chat to the meeting host. And Ms. Heather Lacy is helping us out. Who do we have?
I see five raised hands presently. Charlotte Sitlow, Jeff Rogers, Nathan Mutchler, someone with the screen name E Money and Paul Post. I'll begin in that order with Charlotte Sitlow, who should be able to unmute.
Ms. Sitlow, welcome.
Yeah, this was for earlier, but I've got another question. Do, don't you have exit interviews?
We can follow up with that question later, but at this time, we're just taking comments.
Okay, I see. Excuse me. All right. Well, I think you're doing a wonderful job. But there's a, but I, I am, I am concerned that we don't, I don't hear enough about collaborative efforts on, in any of the departments that I've heard, heard budgets on this afternoon.
Okay, thank you. Duly noted. Who do we have next, Ms. Lacy?
Next, we have Jeff Rogers, who should be able to unmute.
Good evening, council members. My name is Jeff Rogers and I'm one of the union representatives for the Bloomington Police Department. The chief is not responsible for our salaries or for the amount of manpower we have, so my comments tonight are directly for Mayor Hamilton. Mr. Mayor, you have hired sixty-six officers since you took over and lost sixty-seven. In the last eighteen months, seventeen officers have left BPD to go to other law enforcement agencies. If our department is competitive, as you say, then why go to another agency? We just had a hiring process in which we have twelve positions open. Twenty-nine people applied and not a single one of them were certified officers from other agencies. In comparison, Noblesville Police just had a hiring process at the end of July. A hundred and eighty-nine people applied. They're paid twelve thousand dollars more than BPD. We have shown you all the numbers before and we can show you again, BPD is not competitive in salary or any other compensation. The organizational study that cost the city over fifty thousand dollars specifically looked at BPD's call volume and staffing levels and took the other police agencies in the county into account. It said we needed a hundred and twenty-one officers. You continue to ignore this. In contrast, the same study said that emergency dispatch needed nine additional dispatchers. So you decided to add three dispatchers per year for three years. The department goals state you want to reduce Part One crimes, burglaries, robberies and thefts. Also, you want to reduce the number of gun crimes and increase outreach between BPD and the neighborhoods. How are we supposed to do any of that whenever we don't have enough officers just to take calls for service? We are completely a reactive police department. The reality is, BPD's done a great job, but this won't last. There are staffing minimums in place for the safety of the public and the safety of officers. Mr. Mayor, we need more cops. Civilians help us, but they can't respond to more than ninety percent of the calls we take. We need more cops. Plain and simple. Thank you.
Thank you, Officer Rogers. And then who do we have next?
Next, we have Nathan Mutchler, who should be, oh. Sorry. You should be able to unmute.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate your help. No problem. It's interesting finding myself on many points agreeing with the gentleman who just spoke before me. I think that everyone seems to think that the police department in Bloomington is somewhere between broken and non-functional. And I would question why we would add four community specialists to assist sworn officers in situations where, and I'm reading this from the budget, no crime is involved. I think that there can be a very productive and frank conversation around this budget about what do we want Bloomington Police Department to do? And what is the purpose of it? I don't think that adding more bloat to our police department is the answer and would encourage us council to look critically and strongly at all the requests and ask, is this where we want to send people to work in our community? And is this working for the vision we have of the police department? Thank you.
Next, we have the person with the screen name E Money, who should be able to unmute and state their name for the record, please.
Yeah, my name is Eddie Lennon. I just wanted to say, I appreciate council members Rollo and Sandberg for speaking up over the police department budget last night. I know some council members attend the swearing-in ceremonies from time to time. And their Johnny Hamm likes to talk a big game that he loves the police department. Swearing in new officers is the favorite part of his job. But when you look at the budget, I think that it shows differently in the fact that he last year wanted to take away officers. So really, the only thing he can do to help fix the problem is fire up that money printing press he has on North Morton for everything else and shell out some money for the officers. So thank you for your time.
Next, we have the person, Paul Post, who should be able to unmute now.
Good evening, council members. Paul Post, President FOP Lodge Eighty-Eight, representing the hard-working men and women at the Bloomington Police Department. Hard-working but tired officers, I will add. The past eighteen months have seen them pivot to handling policing during a pandemic, coupled with a stark rise in violent crime. I would be lying if I told you the members were pleased with Mayor Hamilton's proposed budget. Disappointed and dismayed would be more accurate words. For months, we have heard the push for annexation, which pending approval of this body, will require massive hiring of police officers to provide basic police services. But that was not reflected in this proposal. BPD is currently far understaffed, causing unneeded wear and tear on your officers due to working mandatory overtime and patrol shifts spent at or below minimum staffing. We have spent the past four years telling everyone who will listen that BPD is facing a staffing crisis. During that timeframe, the United States has experienced a shift in modern law enforcement, one which has caused veteran officers to leave at unprecedented rates, young officers to reevaluate where they work, and made the hiring of new officers willing to take on these jobs difficult. BPD is not immune to these conditions. The current police hiring market is driven by agencies willing to seek qualified candidates through aggressive salary increases. When you need to hire officers quickly, you have to be positioned to attract them. We've given you and the mayor these facts and I won't drown you with more of them tonight. The city commissioned their own salary study and organizational assessment reports at taxpayer expense that illustrated these facts. That's why, in light of annexation efforts by the mayor, we expected a much stronger push to build up staffing. Finally, thank you for the tough questions last night. I had numerous officers express their gratitude today upon hearing city officials speak up about our reality. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Post. Officer Post?
I do not see any additional raised hands. And I do not have any messages in the chat asking to speak.
All right, let's just give it one more moment. If anybody else would like to speak about the Bloomington Police Department budget proposal? Ms. Lacy, I'm getting a message from somebody who said she had sent a message. She wanted to speak.
If the message was sent, I'm wondering if it came to the meeting host. I do not see it. Do you know the screen name?
Gabriella Escobal.
The person should be able to unmute now.
Hi, yeah, I'm not sure what happened. I did, I, somebody did answer me and say, thanks for wanting to share, so I'm not sure how that happened.
Please go ahead.
Okay. Good evening. I am Gabriella Escobal, an officer with the Bloomington Police Department. Your officers want to community police. They want to connect and build relationship, relationships with its community. I work in District Five and have built relationships with low-income minorities in that community at the cost of my limited free time. As we have, as have many other officers, when the opportunities arise, you have humble officers who don't seek to publicize and photograph every good deed that they do. They build with, we, the people we build with don't have the resources to be here tonight, but that doesn't mean that we aren't out there trying. However, when we are forty officers short, according to the staffing study, we don't even have the numbers to staff the streets. We have worked fifty-four days this year where an officer was man, mandated to hold over for a double shift. That is twenty-two percent mandated doubles. We have worked sixty-five percent of the year at the safety minimum and sixty-three percent of the year below the safety minimum. Your city only ever has five, between five and nine officers on a good day for the entire city this year. Officers are sacrificing sleep, family time and mental health to keep up with their training, working their shifts and picking up tons of overtime to staff the city safely. Training is a huge deal to us as officers, so we have worked sixteen, seventeen, nineteen-hour days to be able to train and work. We can't keep sustaining the entire city with six to nine officers who are exhausted, can't even take a sixth-day emergency family day or mental health day without another officer being mandated, mandated to hold over. How can we, how can officers want to stay in the city when we are the seventh-largest city and sixty-eighth in pay? We are CLIA-accredited, which means we are dedicated to equality, accountability and safety of our officers and citizens. And yet we are still underpaid, understaffed and treated less than. We need to do better for the sake of our low-income communities, crime-ridden neighborhoods and its community members and for our officers. Thank you.
Thank you, Officer Escobal. Any other public comments?
There are no other raised hands.
And nobody's.
No messages in the chat.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Lacy. And let us come back to council members. I would entertain follow-up questions or comments at this point. Councilmember Sandberg?
I'm ready to comment if there are no further questions.
I, I did want to follow up on Dr. Sitlow's question regarding exit interviews. Chief DeKoff, when an officer leaves his or her position, is there an exit interview conducted? And what do you do with the, the results of those?
I, I don't have an answer for that tonight. I, I believe we have done some exit interviews, but I'm, I'm not a hundred percent certain. So I will have to check on that.
All right. Yes, I'd be very interested to know. Thank you. Councilmember Rollin, did you have a follow-up question as well?
I did. Chief, we've heard talk about the relative shortage of, of staff, I mean, you, what you started with, of course. I guess my question is, is there a point at which we reach an emergency? And if we have an emergency, how do we, I mean, if, if, let's just say we, we can't grow or we lose a couple more officers. Do we, can we hire temporary officers from another agency? Is there some way to, to get temporary help? What do you, what do you say to that?
Um, I believe we could probably hire temporary officers. I would have to check with, obviously with HR and legal on that.
Of course.
You know, we hired temporary IU part-time officers for our downtown stuff. But there's, there would have, there's a lot that would have to be looked at because of, you know, we'd, I'm, we'd have to look at the training of that officer. Even when we hired the temporary IU officers, we did additional training so that they did things, you know, our way. And so there's a lot of stuff that would have to be worked out.
No, I understand, I understand that. What I'm asking is, because of our high standards, you know, what, like, if we continue to have a shortage or if the shortage increases, do we have an emergency plan where we can bring in temporary officers until we can staff up again?
We do not have an emergency plan like that. What we would have to do is ask probably for assistance from the state police. That's, that's kind of what their, their role is, is to assist other law enforcement agencies.
Do you have a, a point at which you would feel that you would have to trigger that option?
Well, ultimately, the answer is yes, but I, I, I'm not sure. Obviously, that would be in consultation with, with probably the mayor and the city council about how we would proceed with something like that.
Well, that's, I mean, that's what I'm trying to understand is like, at what number, you know, of, of sworn officers on duty or at least employed by the city, is it too few that we have to bring other, you know, we have to, and to do some kind of emergency measure? How much lower than what our current staffing is? How much lower than what our current staffing is?
I, I'm not, I don't think I'm prepared to answer that right now. I, I think I need to look at that more closely.
Okay, thank you.
Are there other follow-up questions before we go to comments? I have one, and it's probably, I don't know if it's for Chief DeKoff or if it's more of a legal question. But considering the staffing shortage and the, the comparatively low salaries, is, is it possible to open contract negotiations early in order to increase the compensation package and get our numbers up?
I don't know if we have any lawyers, but my belief is, yes, I think we, we can. But I don't know all of the steps involved in that. But I do believe that, I do believe we could do that.
Council Chair, that was addressed last evening. Philippa Guthrie, Corporate Counsel, indicated that we could have an addendum to the contract, raising salaries if all parties were in agreement.
Thank you for reminding me of that, Councilmember Rollo. I see Deputy Mayor Don Griffin has.
Oh, no, I, I was just going to answer that as correct. She did.
Oh, okay. All right. Well, that's very good to know. Thank you. All right, well, let's move to final comments on the BPD budget request, and Councilmember Sandberg.
Thank you. This has been a long journey for me because three years ago, twenty-eighteen, this was a different council, not this one. The council before this, we heard from the FOP leadership that there were problems in the Bloomington Police Department surrounding recruiting and training and concerns over salaries and concerns over being competitive. At that time, I took that information under consideration. I didn't believe it right away, but it, it caught me off guard because typically they don't come directly to the city council when collective bargaining is on the table. That should be between their representatives and the city administration's representatives. I felt slightly uncomfortable that they felt the need to come to us as council members to ask for relief. So at that point, I kind of got the feeling maybe this ship was sinking a little bit. But I will tell you, after three years of observing, ride-alongs, talking to the rank-and-file officers, I think that ship is now on fire. So I will not be able to support the budget. It does not address our most critical needs. I think we need to take a good, hard look at salaries as a way to show our trained, disciplined, and dedicated officers that this city cares about them, we care about the public safety of this community, and we in Bloomington expect the best, the best, and that's going to require an investment. I think we need to take a look at some of the other extraneous things. I don't know that the take-home car program is working all that well. I don't know that the, the housing incentives are working all that well for everybody. And I think Bloomington has a serious problem that we'd better start taking seriously. So my vote tonight will be no.
All right, subsequent council member comments. Councilmember Rollo.
Thank you. This is, my comments are directed to Mayor Hamilton. He noted last night that a fundamental obligation of city government is for public safety. And in that point of, I'm in point of agreement with him. This proposal, however, our budget fails in that obligation. What we are lacking are sworn officers. We are not lacking community service specialists with limited roles and limited hours. To raise the authorization to a hundred and five, as he proposes, is the correct course of action. The organizational assessment indicates we should have a hundred and twenty-one. As we have found out, we have ninety-three. We can't seem to recruit anymore, and the effective number is seventy-six. So the consequence of this is mandatory overtime, which is putting a tremendous strain on officers, and I find this unacceptable. To raise the authorization to a hundred and five officers is, is all well and good. I agree. But as we know, we cannot hire enough or retain them long enough to reach the current number even of a hundred with, with the current pay. That means the pay for officers is lower than Seymour and Martin's so right now. This is why we can't recruit and retain. We spend considerable amounts on training and educating and best practices, and then they leave for better compensation elsewhere. As I said before, we're the seventh-largest city in the state, and we rank sixty-eighth in pay. So we can't hire and retain officers under these circumstances. I know in the past five years, the department hired sixty-six officers and we lost sixty-seven. There is no easy way to state this, but this trajectory points to a crisis if it continues. I have the deepest respect for our police department. They have an exemplary record of working under very difficult circumstances. We can't jeopardize public safety by overwork and underpay. This is affecting morale and certainly high turnover affects cohesion of any organization. We've lost and stand to lose more experienced officers. I worry that as officers are only human, and humans make mistakes under duress, mental, emotional stress, lack of rest, lack of experience, that we are setting ourselves up for a tragic outcome. Bloomington deserves the best services, the best roads, the best water quality, and the best in public safety. You get what you're paid for. I think that we ought to increase base pay by five thousand dollars immediately. That's what I expect to see in this budget if I'm going to support it in the future. The Biden administration has indicated that ARPA funds could be utilized for this. I haven't even touched on, you know, the need for facilities, but let's begin first by investing in people. Thank you.
All right, additional council member comments? Councilmember Sims.
Thank you. And I want to thank our community members for their comments that we heard this evening and the robust discussion. This is my comment. I want to live in a safe community, and I know that my neighbors want the same. I want sworn officers that protect and serve and respect the residents of this community. I think we have that. I want broad community conversation, community outreach, and community input on, on law enforcement standards and expectations. With all due respect to our sworn officers and our non-sworn staff and our BPD leaders, for this particular budget tonight, I will abstain, but I will not refuse to continue to participate in this community discussion in order to reach the levels and the standards and the expectations that we expect in this community for our law enforcement officers. Thank you.
Thank you. An additional, additional comment from council members. Councilmember Scamalary.
Yes, thank you. I'll start where Councilmember Rollo did. In his, in Mayor Hamilton's remarks on the opening night of Budget Week, he described public safety as, quote, "the most fundamental of city services," and I agree. We also are a city that prides ourselves on being a good employer. We've passed a living wage even for temporary workers. We've passed an increased minimum wage. We spoke last night about family leave. We want to be a good employer, and I support those efforts. I am grateful that we have a police department that is forward-thinking and that places a priority on things like anti-bias training and de-escalation, and that emphasizes training so much. If we want to be the kind of city, if we want to be the kind of employer that we've talked about, I think we need to act on that, and now is the time that we need to do that. Social workers and sworn officers have been part of my constituent meetings. They have met with my constituents, and I have never been anything less than wholly impressed by how they worked and how they served, and I am grateful for them. Regardless of whether or not you think Bloomington needs fifty sworn officers or five hundred, we have to admit that turnover is expensive. Failing to retain our officers, particularly our experienced mid-career and senior officers, is a problem, and it's costing us money, and more important, even than money, it may be endangering the safety of our community. We've been asked by the mayor, beyond that, we have been asked by the mayor to consider annexing thousands of acres of land around this city and extending city services to those areas. We're struggling to fill the positions we have. That seems like mutually incompatible requests on his part. I am concerned when I hear comments like we heard yet last night. We've hired nearly seventy officers in recent years. The implication being somehow that we've grown our force, and in reality, we've barely been treading water. I think there are good questions being asked tonight, and I think there are too many questions and concerns still remaining for me to support the BPD budget as the mayor has presented it to us. I'll be abstaining tonight. I look forward to continued discussions. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional council member comments? Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. I will be voting no tonight on this budget. The central issue is that salaries are not high enough to, to attract officers to stay. And that, you know, that's just the heart of the whole matter. So I, I would like to see that there's a movement from the administration to increase the salaries. Five thousand is fine, you know, that's great. Whatever it takes, the market, what, what it takes in the market to attract and retain our, our well-trained officers is really important. So I will be voting tonight on this and hope in the final version I will see an increase in the salary. Thank you.
All right. Any other council members here to comment? Councilmember Flaherty.
Thank you. Thanks again, my colleagues and Chief DeKoff, for the discussion. I, I have some follow-ups, to be sure, on a number of fronts, including the question I asked earlier and unpacking that a little more and asking some questions about best practices that other progressive communities are engaging in. But I mentioned kind of two issues around stress on the police force. I mentioned salaries, compensation competitiveness, and then also sort of workload, and how we can address both of those things as sort of variables in the equation of what's causing current strain on the police department. So the second one, again, I think we have some ideological differences on this body and sort of a range of what the research says, what progressive communities are doing to try to address public safety, which is not the same thing as police. It is related, but there, I think that was get conflated a lot. I'm hearing a lot of comments that sort of assume public safety means police, and I just don't agree with that as a fundamental premise from a political and community value standpoint. But going back to the compensation piece, I'm, I'm open to this, and I think it's an interesting conversation. I, you know, several colleagues just asked for a five thousand dollar increase in, in base pay or something like that. My understanding is that would require reopening of the FOP contract a year in advance. You know, if the administration and the FOP both wanted to do that or had some common understanding around where they would go with that, I don't know if that would then preempt the, the next year's negotiation, if it would just advance everything by a year, if it would be a a special amendment to the previous contract. I'm curious to explore that idea more. I think what the mayor has proposed with the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar fund to address potential incentives that could, that could look at that compensation piece in the interim is, is maybe his effort to, to do that in a way that doesn't reopen the contract with the union, but not sure that is compelling to folks. So I'm, I'm, I'm very interested and curious to continue the conversation as well with my colleagues with the administration and continue to explore a variety of aspects here. So I'll abstain tonight, and thanks again for everybody for weighing in, including members of the public and sworn officers of BPD tonight. Thanks.
Additional comment from council members? Councilmember Volan?
Yes, I see two primary issues at this moment that affect the police department. The first is the ongoing nationwide reckoning of policing in the context of race and other methods for maintaining public safety. And the second is the ongoing burnout in our local force due to inadequate staffing. I believe these two issues are separate. If we're going to have a police force, it should be effective. If it is to be effective, we have to acknowledge the obvious personnel issues, independent of the ideological discussion that may frame it. Now, I've asked questions several times over the years about the bottleneck that is the Law Enforcement Academy. The chief has made clear that this is out of his hands. It's a state issue. I, it mystifies me that the state has not addressed the issue. I would think that this is an issue that the state would jump on, and yet here we still are, unable to train officers with any expeditedness. There is the obvious issue that our salaries have fallen to one of the lowest in the state for comparable cities. You know, it's nothing to be proud of. And there's the, the issue of how many staff, how many sworn officers should we have? This one is much more nebulous. You know, there is certainly, I mean, in many other cities, there's a significantly greater number of police, but before we had this extreme shortage, the city seemed to have been getting along okay, at least in my time on council. So these are all issues that have to be addressed, but it doesn't really change the fact that we have never, never been able to increase our police force at a rate of more than two net new officers a year. I haven't seen any evidence to contradict that. So I don't see how, what difference it makes whether we add the line items back. The five officers are there. If it makes everybody feel better, that's great. But I mean, I would just as soon use the money for those lines to pay the officers that we have now, so at least we keep them. And then grow those lines back. I don't know the answer to any of these things. I've never been able to wrap my head around what a good solution would be. I just know that those are the problems that I see. I can't vote yes to this budget. I, I'm ambivalent as to whether I should abstain or vote no, but I think that the administration has to address it better than it has. So with that, I'll, I'll leave it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council member comments? I'll take a stab at it. As Councilmember Sandberg said a few years ago, when the, the police negotiations with the, the police union were ongoing, and this, the issue of compensation was brought to our attention. At that time, I also was scratching my head and thinking, well, why, why are our salaries so low? Why do we not have a more comparable compensation package to other communities in the state? And of course, that, that negotiation took a year longer than it should have, and it's, so it was very hard fought, and I don't, I wasn't party to it. I don't know, you know, what went down for the FOP to accept the salaries that we have now. But it has become increasingly clear to me that the salaries are inadequate, and this is a problem. This is a problem with recruitment and retention. And, you know, I, I, I agree with a lot of what's already been said. I don't need to rehash it. You know, we, we have excellent training, and we don't want to, to train people who then go and use our, the skills they learned with us elsewhere. So I, I think it is a big problem. At the same time, I, I do want to speak up for non-sworn personnel in the realm of public safety. I think this is an important addition that Mayor Hamilton has made, and that he continues with this budget proposal. I think that in some cases, the appearance of a sworn uniformed police officer in a scene is not helpful just because of the, the national perception of police and what we've seen in many, many other communities where police have engaged in disrespectful and downright racist behavior. And that, you know, that perception carries over to Bloomington whether or not we have the same incidents here, which thankfully we have not so far. So I think that there is an important role to be played by non-sworn officers who do not carry that uniform and that burden of racism and, you know, can, can intervene in many situations where mental health may be the bigger issue than criminality. So that's a good part of the, the budget proposal, but the salaries, I do think we need to fix them earlier than next year's contract negotiations. So I will be passing on this budget tonight. Thank you. All right. Oh, now Councilmember Rosenbarger. I was waiting for that.
Sorry. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I know. I'm sorry. I never really know when to raise my hand. I appreciate the comments by everybody tonight. I just had like three quick things to add, and some of these have been touched on just a little. So for me, I think I will abstain. I think similar to Councilmember Volan, I think I know an abstention can be the same a lot right now, but I'm just not really ready yet to endorse this. So first, I would say, I am concerned, like everyone else here, about the compensation and the morale and stress of our officers. I don't think any of us want officers to be burnt out. I think we feel the same about all departments in the city. We want staff across the board to feel, to feel good, to love showing up at their job right, and to know that folks care about them doing a good job. I think it is important that Bloomington is competitive. And our salaries for officers, if we really are ranked 68, you know, I didn't know that. And I think that's just not at all competitive. I mean, this is a great place to live, but it's also a really expensive place to live. So being so low in salaries makes a lot of sense that folks aren't choosing to work here. The second thing, I think, is we need to look at the bigger picture. I think, you know, I think Councilmember Flaherty touched on this. Public safety does not necessarily mean increased officers. So I think a lot of people in the city have even said they don't feel safe in the presence of police. So looking at ways to increase public safety that potentially does not, you know, use sworn officers, I think is important, and I think that's important for the police budget specifically. Third, I have questions about the industry overall that I have not looked into on my own. I mean, are people stepping up nowadays to be police officers, or are they, are they not? Is there a supply there that was there decades ago? In a way, I sort of doubt it, especially nowadays. And I think if that's the case, if the industry is shrinking a little, we really need to look at what public safety is and like what people want to do and how we can match, match those skill sets and interests with, you know, creating a city where everybody feels safe. So I think if there's just a gap in who we're trying to hire, and these people just don't exist, we're just never going to get there. So I, I don't know. I think it would be interesting to look at other ways to, you know, employ folks who are interested in increasing public safety. So I'll be abstaining tonight and looking forward to working on this in the future. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. I think we've all had an opportunity for council comments, so I'm.
Move, do pass, or I'll second Councilmember Sims?
That's not in order. The chair can just call the rule.
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Scamblerie, Councilmember Sims. So let's do our straw poll on the BPD budget. Councilmember Smith?
No.
Councilmember Scamblerie?
Pass.
Councilmember Sandberg?
No.
Councilmember Flaherty? Councilmember Volan?
No.
Councilmember Rallo?
No.
Councilmember Sims?
Abstain.
Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Abstain.
And I will also abstain. So that's a vote of 0, 4, 5. Thank you very much, Chief DeKoff, for your time.
Thank you.
And I think that concludes our business for the evening. Is that correct, Ms. Lacy?
It is.
All right. Well, thank you very much, everybody. And we will reconvene tomorrow at 6:00 PM for subsequent departmental budget hearings.
Thank you all.
Thank you.